Good. Welcome to the Litchfield Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 18th. We'll start by the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
The board is just coming out of paperwork and manifest review. First up on the agenda is review of items for consent. Do they have any concerns with the items in consent? There was one addition, which was the March 14th meeting minutes that were put in this morning. And a few tax credits, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the consent agenda be accepted, presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 5-0-0. Next up is request for items, any other items for other business.
I'd like to add to the agenda a discussion on the sewer warrant article.
Anybody else have anything else? Alright, we'll do that. Any other business? Okay, next is swearing of elected officials. Everybody knows we had a great election last week, so we have a few new folks. So I will turn the floor over to Mrs. Brinell.
How did you want to do this? You want to start on the selectman first and then the others? We're going to do it all together.
Uh, we can do it all together, right? There's no reason, it's the same.
Yeah, you're swearing everyone, so.
Yeah, you're swearing everybody. You get to swear to everybody. Do you want us to come around?
Okay.
Finally, it's not just me. Alright, so why don't we come around? Not that big.
Raise my hand?
One handed.
Same problem.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent on you as selectman, road agent, selectman, budget committee? According to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the state of Hampshire, so help you God.
I do.
Hey Jason, shouldn't we do the reorg first and then do the reappearance of the treasurers?
Sure. Yeah.
I'm looking on, is there a reason why it's?
It's just the order that I remembered to.
Put it in, okay.
Put them in, so, yeah.
Alright, so first official act of this new seated board, and welcome Kevin.
Thank you.
Is to reorganize the Board of Selectmen. Needs the nominations for Chair and Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations for Chair?
I nominate John Brunel as Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I guess. All those in favor of John Brunel? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Motion carries four, zero, one, and I thank you. I look forward to another year of fun. Uh, next is the nominations for Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Frank Byron.
Second.
You beat me to it. Okay, nomination from Mr. Byron for Vice Chair, and a second by Mrs. Jewitt. Any other nominations? Uh, hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries, I should be the one opposing. Motion carries.
Four, zero.
Four, one, zero.
I wouldn't give you the satisfaction.
Well, if anyone doesn't know, this board leads on each other all the time, so it doesn't really matter at this point. Alright, great. Uh, next thing is, um, we also have some liaison officio positions that we need to kind of rebalance with the seating of the new board. Uh, let me just get my list real quick. Um, there's planning board, I'll just run down. Planning board, budget committee, conservation, recreation, and regional hazardous waste. Does anybody have any desires to serve on any of those boards? I will obviously, I would do budget again this year.
I'll do the planning board.
I'd be glad to do conservation and hazardous waste, if that's, well, somebody else wants them.
Okay. I think, who is hazardous waste now? Mrs. Jewitt?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And conservation? Alright, I can't, I'm confused. Do I need to do a motion to do approve all that? That's just me reassigning, right?
I mean, I think we ought to talk about it.
Okay.
My only concern with planning board is that it is a new group of people. The total amount of experience in that group is probably less than three years in total. So, I don't have a problem, I mean, but it's a steep learning curve. It takes you about a year to learn that.
Well, let me ask you a question Frank. Um, I actually expected you to throw your hand up and say you wanted to continue doing planning. Do you want to continue doing planning?
No, I don't, but at the same time. I've been doing it now probably for.
Ten years.
So.
Longer than you've been alive.
I doubt that.
Longer than I've been alive.
Doubt that. I'm not as young as I look. Here's my suggestion. I think with Kevin's knowledge of the trades, and your knowledge of the procedures and the stuff that you've been doing over the years, does it make sense to just do a co-seat and more of let Kevin learn by attending those meetings and get involved?
You know, Frank be the lead and Kevin be the alternate.
It's not so much a trades issue as it is the regulations and things like that.
Yeah, no, I just, I, what I meant by that was Kevin being experienced in that field.
Yeah, I don't have a, and don't get me wrong, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to, in fact, you know, my comment to the board is we need to break somebody new into this because.
Yeah.
You know.
So guess what Kevin?
My term, my term.
There you go.
As a selectman expires next year.
Okay.
So, uh, we need to break somebody new into, um, learning the planning board.
You know, when you can't do budget.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, I know that. Yep. Except that usually is when it's real budget time. That's fine. Yeah, so I actually, I think that's a good idea. If, just like we do with the budget committee, we have the alternate, and if Kevin can actually attend most of the meetings and learn and add value there, um, I will so forward that to the planning board as we saw our desire to do that that way.
Okay. And the next meeting's tomorrow night at seven. Be there.
There you go, thrown right on in.
Shot vacation.
So conservation, if Mrs. Jewitt, you kind of signed up there already?
I really like recreation even better, but I'm a member of the Grange and I'm an officer, and I think when you're an officer, you should do your duty.
Okay. So we have, last up is recreation.
It's not that I don't like it. I would like it. I like the group that you work with too. I like conservation too.
Okay.
It's not, kind of dull compared to recreation.
Alright, I'll do recreation again if that's, if anyone does desire to step, wants to do it too, then I'll be fine to step aside, but. Yeah.
I don't mind that.
Alright Kevin. You're gonna, you're gonna hit him when he gets home. Trust me, my wife's gonna hit me when I get home. Alright, so the slate is this. Planning board will be the, um, will be Frank Byron with a alternate of Kevin Bork. And Kevin will attend as many meetings as he can to get the learning and understanding what goes on there. Budget committee will be myself. My alternate will be Mr. Lemire. Conservation commission will be Mrs. Jewitt. Recreation committee will be Mr. Bork. Regional hazardous waste will be Mrs. Jewitt. So, I guess to make it official, I'll make a motion of that. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. I will send an email, um, to all the chairs of those boards and committees. You'll probably tell them about regional hazardous waste and send an official note saying that we reappointed Mrs. Jewitt.
Reappointed her?
Reappointed Mrs. Jewitt. Didn't she the?
Wait, 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 maybe we're thinking different things here.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
There's two issues with waste. You're talking National Regional Planning Commission, right?
Nope, regional.
I thought that Jason, we appointed Jason to do that.
Nope.
You sure?
You're the national one, right?
No.
No, he was before.
Now, that's, that's, yeah, that's totally different. I'm the hazardous materials. That's the emergency management one, not the trash one.
I know what it is. I just wanted to make sure that we're all talking the same thing.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Alright, moving on to the agenda. Um, the reappearance of Sharon Harding Reed as treasurer. And the approval of the treasurer as well. I guess we have to do one step at a time. So, we need to reappoint Sharon as treasurer.
I make a motion we reappoint Sharon to be treasurer for one year.
Correct. Yes, question, go ahead.
Well, you got, Mrs. Jewitt made a motion, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second her motion.
Alright, so motion's made and seconded to reappoint Sharon Harding Reed as treasurer. Your question?
My question is, when was the last background check on Ms. Reed? And has it fit the time point where we need to redo the background check?
It's, uh, they were done last year after we introduced that policy. And for treasurer and deputy, it is every two years. So they will be slated again next year to do the background.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of Sharon Harding Reed as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. And I do have paperwork that will be assigned for her. Next up is, sorry, you have a question?
No, I was just gonna move on to approve the treasurer's appointment of Ms. Deborah Holgencamp as the Deputy Treasurer.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Jewitt. Any discussion?
Do we have a letter of nomination by the treasurer?
It is right in your meeting, uh, notes for tonight if you click on Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer.
Yeah.
The treasurer sent me an email because as the motion pointed out, it is the treasurer's appointment and it's the selectman's approval of that appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, it says basically, I hereby appoint Deborah Holgencamp as Deputy Treasurer. Signed Sharon A. Harding Reed. Treasurer of Litchfield. Treasurer of Town of Litchfield. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Congratulations and welcome back.
And actually, since Terry is here and Deb is here, we can actually swear her in.
Oh, yeah.
And take care of all of that right now.
If you don't mind doing that, please. In prompt to swear in.
That's okay. Raise my hand. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent on you as Deputy Treasurer for the Town of Litchfield. According to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the state of Hampshire, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Welcome again.
Thank you.
Welcome back. And thank you for your service last year.
And thank you for your service this year.
And this year, there'll be more. I think these will have to go to her anyway, right? Because she's got to sign them?
Yep.
They'll be notarized.
Yep. So Terry, if you want to take these with you right now, I think we've all signed them.
How's that? That's service, right? Boy, really on the ball.
Trying to be. Alright, next up is, um, public input. Is there anybody in the public that wish to speak to the board of the community at large? You sure you don't want to come up and yell? He's right here, he can't yell back.
That's why my wife doesn't come, right?
Absolutely correct. Alright, hearing no, nothing from the public, we'll close public input. Next on the agenda is, uh, presentation from the fire chief regarding the new higher wage schedule. Chief? Welcome. Deputy Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
With me tonight's Deputy Chief Paul Allard. And we're here to, um, basically review the proposal that was put forward and seek concurrence of the board. Currently, all call firefighters are compensated at the same rate regardless of time with the department, certification levels, experience education, so on and so forth. With the recent hiring of several new members, we sought to kind of even that out and create a true incentive program so that, um, employees are awarded or rewarded as they earn certifications. And it will kind of set them apart based upon their ambition and their so forth, so. You have the proposal. I guess if there's questions, certainly we're happy to entertain the questions on the proposal.
Does anybody have any questions?
This is in line with what you had brought forth. What your intention was.
Yeah, originally, yeah, as we went into this budget, uh, this budget year, anticipating having some positions to fill with the reorganization last fall, one of the things we looked at was, um, we require for multiple reasons, probably one of the bigger ones being liability of the town, is we require that our firefighters earn certain level one or firefighter one certification. Which is about a 210 or so hours. It's under, um, review right now, so it may come down a little bit. But essentially, for all intents and purposes, 200 hours of training. And to expect them to do that without any type of compensation just didn't appear to us to be a prudent thing to do. However, compensating them at the set rate that's been, uh, three years, I think you had said? Four years now, this rate's been in effect?
It's been since nineteen, since 2006.
Since 2006. It just didn't seem to make sense from a budgetary standpoint and so forth. And again, we'd be actually starting brand-new people with no experience, no certification, at the same level that we have, you know, everybody else at, whether they've been with us three years or going on 30 years. So this was, we had proposed originally in the budget to hire the new, the new folks at a starting rate of $10 an hour, and then as they were certified, adjust that accordingly in anticipation of this program being put forth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
You do have the luxury, I guess, of seeing the, or witnessing what other departments are doing throughout the state.
Yes.
And just, I would, I can only assume that you, in the studies that you've done, is that, I know for a fact that a lot of departments are moving in this direction. And because of the fact that several of them have problems staffing, you know, on a part-time basis, and certainly education, with the amount of education now that they're required to do, certainly the incentive programs are being adopted all over the state. So I can, just for the edification of everyone here, I would like to just have you verify that this is not just, this is being done consequently throughout the state for these reasons.
Yes. In the research, um, we used the local government centers, 2011 salary survey of all the communities in the state, and focused on the 5,000 to 10,000 population range. And then actually looked at a couple of other departments that may not be in that population range, but are similar to us in daytime staffing. Maybe they do more runs than we do, but they have only daytime staffing augmented by a call department. And some of the communities that we used outside of the LGC's 5,000 to 10,000 population breakdown, because they base it purely on population, not necessarily on the type of community, the number of incidents or runs, whether they run firebase EMS or not. We looked at Goffstown, Mount Vernon, Kingston. Obviously, I had, coming from Milford, had the background on Milford. That was fairly, fairly simple. And a lot of these departments are. Kingston's doing a very similar program. Amherst just recently went through this process and has switched to a similar type program. Goffstown has a matrix, actually has probably one of the more formalized matrices for certification levels and for their call departments. So it was purely geared towards call departments, again, of similar types, depending on whether we looked at call volume, whether we looked at coverage, and so forth, so.
Has it, do you have any reports of the success level of these, or is it still too new in a lot of them?
Um, the departments, like I said, Goffstown switched about a year or two ago. I don't know what their, I don't know that anybody's hurting based upon the changes they made. I think everything that, in my conversations with my colleagues has been positive, to go to an incentive-type program and so forth, so. It seemed like a natural progression, and again, something that we can kind of set. We haven't hired in three years, a little more than three years. So in fairness to that person who was hired three years ago, who has since gone out and done in excess of 500 hours of training, to bring somebody in at the same rate that they're currently making, just in my mind, didn't make good business sense.
Right.
So to try and move, step back a little bit from the current rate, but allow the incentives to bring us up almost to that current rate, that's the proposal that you have in front of you, so. And naturally, if they come to us, as some have with prior certifications, we're going to give them credit for that, once this is in place.
So how are you playing on phasing this in? So someone who's been, already been here that's making the current wage, which is higher than what your proposed starting wage is, and they're a firefighter one, are they going to get a $1.50 bump at that rate, or they're going to just work into it?
Our current employees, it doesn't affect them at all, it's only the new employees.
Right, okay, just new.
Will be back later in the year or as part of next year's budget proposal for current. That's a little bit of a tougher nut to crack.
Yeah, that was your summary at the end that you would be.
Yeah, this is purely going to affect the new hires.
The new five.
Post-March 1st.
And to be fair to, you know, Chief and Deputy, we, his original analysis of this had a strategy for, you know, our existing employees and figuring out how to work this going forward. Obviously, the result of Tuesday led us to think, we'll backburner that one for a little bit, but we have these new people that are already on, that we made a commitment to, and we have a disparity that we needed to keep that in motion. And that lives within the budget allocation we expected.
Sure, right, because it's much lower than what we forecasted anyway, so.
There actually is one impact to current staff, and I don't want to overlook that. We had, we had set a focus last year on increasing the number of driver operators of the apparatus. We brought in a pump specialist to do a 16-hour class for both potential drivers as well as current drivers for review and so forth. We have added, we added a significant number, actually, pretty much the entire department through the course of last year was approved to operate the rescue, which is the smallest of the apparatus, and runs on all the medical calls and so forth. And then what we've done with this proposal is in order to kind of wrap that program up and to recognize those that have gone out and got their CDL license and taken the time necessary to learn how to run the pump, run the apparatus. It's not simply driving the truck to and from. The pumps are a fairly complex piece of equipment that takes some learning, some math, some actual on-the-fly calculations for calculating the friction loss in the pump, in the hose, in the appliances, and so forth. So this proposal does, uh, does offer a one-time stipend for any of the current firefighters who become drivers prior to December 1st of this year. But that'd be a one-time shot, and Jason and I are comfortable that that's within the budget as it stands.
December 1st of?
Thirteenth, this year.
Alright.
Yeah.
And what about folks who have already become drivers?
If they already are, if they are today, they would be entitled to that incentive as well. And again, it's kind of a, kind of a little bit of a, thank you for doing what you've done, even if you've been doing it for a number of years, as well as to get the three, four, five or so that are kind of right on that edge that we've been working with. And obviously, winter plays a little bit of a challenge in trying to do pump training. So once winter's gone, I thought it was, but I guess not, from the weather forecast.
Tomorrow will be.
Yeah, we have several individuals, yeah, we have several individuals that are just about there, so. And again, it's, it's something that I would anticipate it's probably going to encompass no more than 10 or so.
So, in summary, Chief, what is the total cost of the program?
It would depend upon the, um, who we hire.
Because this is moving forward.
Right.
But you're talking also about giving stipends to people who are currently here.
It would be.
So what I want to know is, what's the cost of this?
Yeah, so how many, how many folks already qualify for the $200? I wouldn't call it a stipend, I'd call it sort of a.
Well, that's what I think.
It's an incentive.
It's an incentive, yeah, incentive.
The $200 incentive, so what's the payout on that going to be?
I'd say probably 10 anyways.
10, $2,000?
$2,000, and then you got attention over five of folks.
No, that's including the, that's including.
Okay, it's, yeah, okay.
The three or four.
That's, you said how much? Probably 10. $10,000?
No, 10, 10, 10 people at $200 by the end of the year.
$2,000 by the end of the year.
So 2,000.
Does this all fit in with the default budget that we have?
I believe it, yeah.
It would come out of your call firefighter wages.
It'd come out of that line, right. And again, there's an offset with some of the savings by dropping back to the incentive, the initial part of the program with the new hires.
But you're not having that much of a turnover in the department, so I'm not expecting that you're going to have a lot of decrease in costs.
We've, we've had a few. We've actually had three leave, so, um, we're actually.
But that's three out of 32.
Right.
Right. 10 percent, and you're going to end up saving maybe 10 percent out of that, so that's not much. Just to let you guys know, the microphone, I'm sure, is picking up what you're saying, so.
What happened to these people, I remember you said the last time you were here, that several had left before because of reasons, and now they're talking about coming back. They won't have to start at the very beginning again. Wouldn't they be considered the time, if they were on three years for a period of time before, that they would be included in that, or would they have to start at the $10 an hour deal?
Uh, we have two that are coming back to us from in the past, and they would start under this proposal, but they would, they would get immediate credit for the certifications that they bring back with them. But they're essentially a new hire in that they're coming back.
So they would actually start at $10, but then they, I mean, yeah, $10 now, and then they would get on to whatever.
They would, based upon their individual certification levels, whatever they bring with them, they would get, as it's spelled out in the incentive program. That really only affects two right now that we've just recently hired. One, one is coming in, no prior experience or time with the department, but is certified by the state, so that individual would get credit for that certification as well. Because again, these are certifications, we don't now have to go out, send them to, pay for, and pay their time for. So it's, it's a trade-off. Back to the original question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Still, I, I'm still comfortable that given the numbers, it's, it's, and the few changes we've had, it is, it is a workable solution.
Repeat that again?
I said, I'm comfortable that given the few personnel changes we've had, the new hires, that the numbers are within the current default budget.
So the, the new hires would start, if they had every qualification, well, every certification would be $15.50.
$15.50, right, assuming they're coming in with everything, after the probationary period is up, they would get that additional. So it'd be the, yeah, the $15.50.
And the people that currently exist in the program today, you're not going to change anything with?
What do you mean by the people that currently exist?
Your current.
Current staff, anybody?
Currently, right now, you've got people that are making, what is it, 16?
1632.
Yeah.
$16.50?
There'd be no, no change under this proposal for those. That's.
Well, the only difference would be the driver bonus.
Other than the driver bonus, it's a stipend. Other than the, the driver bonus, it's stipend.
The one-time payout for, for doing something, yeah.
Okay, that is a proposal we'll be bringing back later in the year or as part of next year's budget process to address the current staff.
Okay. Any other questions for the Chief or Deputy?
Do you have a, a grid on out of this, or is, I, I, we've got your memo, but.
I have a matrix with actual employee names and so forth.
Oh, okay, so you don't have like a?
Chat?
Not with, without the names is what I'm saying, just to.
Based on certifications and numbers and so forth, is that?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Well, certainly I could take him out.
But that doesn't, it doesn't affect this request. This request is for new employees coming on board, which we're talking about potentially no more than five.
As long as he keeps it in his budget, hey.
My, my request is based upon the idea that right now, the firefighters, if I'm not mistaken, are part of the step system of the town and involved, not a step system, but they're, they're on the grid that we put together several months ago, yes, they were.
Oh, on, on the, oh, well, no, no, on the, uh, this is for the call department. The call department, we left off the grid, that, that draft I put together entirely, because this was something that the Chief was working on with a different strategy. The grid that we put, put together was really a longevity-based piece, um, and.
There was also details in there, if I'm not mistaken, mistaken about the, uh, the full-time firefighters.
Right, who are not part of this mix at all. That's, those are.
The full-time.
Those are apples and oranges, sort of in my, at, at least in my world, it's apples and oranges in terms of a salary schedule. The full-time fire, uh, you know, firefighters are within our overall wage schedule, move steps, move years. Uh, the call, because we were coming from a spot where we had a one-size-fits-all program for call, that, um, we knew that we were looking at something a little more nuanced, so they're not part of that plan.
So my, my request was really dealing with the idea that we as a town should have this somehow in the selectman's office as well. So that we know what the schedule is, and that's why I was asking if he had a matrix or.
Oh, that's easy enough to, yeah.
That out, so that we could have that information, so that even our payroll staff, and I know they'd be taking direction from the Chief, as to what criteria they would need to make, could be able to interpret it, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly add it in, my hesitation for a moment is that this, these are training-based snapshots, and we sort of had a, we were looking at spectrums and movement laterally, which this hasn't reached yet, this plan that we're looking at now.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we can accompany the, I mean, the data's there, so we'll find a way to put it in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, request of the Fire Chief to move forward with the proposal.
Okay, a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discuss, any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, we'll get the schedule, so we can add it to our domination in the office and go from there.
The vote?
All those in favor, I will get there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four, zero, one. Mr. Bork abstaining. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Say great evening and stay out of the snow, because it's coming.
What a surprise.
Um, Terry's still here, I'm assuming because of the recount discussion, Terry?
Yes, it's.
Okay, can we, um.
You can do whatever you want.
Yeah, well, that's right, because, uh, our, our attorney's not here yet, right?
We scheduled him for seven, so.
Beautiful. Come forward, Terry. We just want to. Yeah, so logistics for tomorrow, if it's certain, if it goes on.
Um, I talked to the moderator, and, um, he says that he, his afternoon appointment has, I don't know if they canceled or changed it, they moved it up, so he can be here for one-thirty. So we'll notify, um, the volunteers that we have and let them know, we're, we're keeping it on for now. Um, if it's really bad, then I guess we'll notify them.
A question.
Before they do.
This is a public notice required, so the public can participate, so can we change the time?
Uh.
Have you posted?
It, yeah, it has been posted.
It has been posted. Yeah, it has been.
For what time?
It has been posted for two-thirty.
Oh, so we.
At three, you said?
Two-thirty.
Oh, that's right, I thought.
Two-thirty, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, we don't have the time to change that.
No.
No.
Right.
But we may, I mean, depending on the weather, we may have to.
Postpone it.
Postpone to, to Thursday, probably.
Yeah, well, that's okay, go.
Yeah, we can't go back, yeah, exactly.
An issue.
Okay.
That's true. So I'll, I'll let John know that we need to keep it, because it has, it was in the Telegraph and it's been posted, so.
Yeah, I've seen it all over the place. Um, I know that when we discussed, when we discussed it on Thursday, um, the board, some of the folks in the board discussed recusing themselves from the vote for being part of the recount, right? Which would make sense, it is our budget, and it's only four votes, but, you know, why, let's not make it get any muddier than that. Um, so I will officially recuse myself.
Okay, you have that form for us to sign for the moderator?
Yeah, so the way I understand logistics, whoever, whoever can, whoever wants to recuse themselves, the moderator will finally fill in for the board's selectman member that recuses himself. Um, and I understand they have plenty of volunteers to do the recount anyway.
Yes, and John will.
And there is no requirement for the board actually to be here.
No, there is not.
Now, I believe Mr. Bork has indicated he will be here, and he'll be more than happy to recount, so.
So it's happening here?
Yes, it'll be in here.
Um, so for those members who do want to recuse themselves, please sign this, so that we get that covered. And then if it goes off as planned, we'll know one way or the other by four o'clock.
The moderator has done up a whole, um, meeting plan and recount process.
Mm-hmm.
That he sent to me today. So I don't know if the board wants a copy, I can run me a copy, so you guys have a copy of it. Um, it's just the whole process with all the RSAs and.
Okay.
So we'll have copies for people if they want them when they come in tomorrow as well.
Yeah, that's all. All right, and Frank, you're not recusing yourself, but you won't be here tomorrow, right?
I can't, I have a, um.
I mean, I can't, but I just figured I'd still recuse.
Yeah, I, I think it makes it, makes it better that way, okay.
I'm doing it, I, I personally, I really wouldn't want to do it, because if it ever came that it went through, I can just.
One on the other side.
Saying, oh, well, Pat was one of the counters, so I really would prefer not to. But I am getting a new stove tomorrow, and they're going to deliver between ten and two, so you can tell people, you know, but I definitely.
Oh, but still, I mean, like you said, it was a budget that, that you guys did, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, I had asked Kevin, because he didn't have anything to do with that budget process, so, you know.
Yeah, he's all set, because he.
Exactly.
He had no.
There's no question about that, he had nothing to do with it.
That's fine.
It looks better if we didn't, I think.
Now, if it does get canceled, do you have a date set?
No, we don't yet. I'm thinking Thursday, but I need to check with the moderator, make sure, because he does work, so I need to make sure.
You might have changed it to Thursday, his program that he was going to do.
You never know. Send it to them today, so.
So you can take that for the records.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, thank you very much, retire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Leo, take her home.
Yeah, yeah, Tommy, home now.
Yes, take her home. Yep, say yeah, bye. It's going to be a lot of long nights without her, don't worry about it. All right, so when we hit the administrative report, as we wait for, um, H. Odes to come in.
Yep.
Um, new business employee position review.
Employee position review, um, kind of note from the Fire Chief as he was processing what would have been a routine step for firefighter paramedic Ray. Um, he passed along a request to, uh, mo, in recognition of the completion of the paramedic program, to move, uh, uh, paramedic Ray up one grade in the pay scale from grade nine to ten.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the background on this has been that, um, Jim graduated from the program in December of two thousand and ten, and so there was no grade adjustment made at that point, that he has simply moved through the scale. You know, it's sort of the, you know, the, the theory at the time had been not unlike what we look at in, you know, when we send police officers to the academy. The town has invested in you, and, you know, there's an obligation there. Well, we've now been, um, two, uh, two-plus years with that. So, um, hence the recommendation to move, to move within our current system up a grade in recognition of the, um, completion of paramedic and two additional years of service to the town in that role.
Is that approved by the Chief?
That comes from the Chief.
That's a request from the Chief.
Yep, yep, yeah, in, in your, in your notes, so you, I, it is, that, what I just summarized the note that the Chief had sent, laying that all out.
In, in calculating, um, paramedic Ray or firefighter Ray's salary for the budget, was that factored into it?
No.
So in other words, that's going to have to come out of their budget also?
It'll have to come out of their bottom line, if the Chief.
Right.
I realize that, but, you know, we only have a, so, one bottom line.
Well, the Fire Department has a bottom line, yes.
But they, they are aware that we have to come out of the bottom line.
Sure, yep.
What, what does that make the, one second, what does that make the salary, what does, what does that make the hourly wage at that point?
From what to what?
Yeah, from what, well, it's twenty-two ninety-two, I believe, right now. He's targeted to go to twenty-three sixty-one, based just on his normal movement through the scale, but.
Um, I'm hesitating because I do not have that piece of paperwork neatly in front of me right now. Um, I see if I have it electronically here.
Yeah, because in the Chief's note, it doesn't actually say what the, uh, the change will be.
Um, I, I don't have it handy, I don't think, um.
Well, I think we're going to need it before we can, well, we will need it before we can prove it, sorry.
Okay, I mean, the, the grade is the grade, the.
I know, I just, I don't have the step, I don't have the thing, I don't have the step sheet in front of me.
Okay.
Because I, I have a problem, and, and the problem I have is, we're being asked now to, to, um, change the grade and everything of firefighter Ray. And I don't have a problem with firefighter Ray, nor the fact that he's done something that's deserving of some type of recognition. But a while ago, I met with the town administrator to go over the, um, grid and to provide him my comments on the grid at his request.
Mm-hmm.
And this was months and months ago, and this was, as we just talked about a moment or two ago, was one of those positions that's on the grid. And now we're changing this again, which changes the whole configuration of this employee grid. And I'm just concerned that we, if we start making these one-off changes, then we're making it harder for ourselves to bring this grid to fruition and to affect what we should be doing for the whole population of town employees.
So let me ask, what grid are you talking about? Because it was two, this is the existing grid today, which is the step program we have already approved, we're just moving him up the grade. There is the other one that we worked on last year a little bit, is part of the policy and this, you know, salary performance review process, which is a whole new model, I think that's the one you're talking about.
Right, and that's the one that we had said that we're going to try and go to. And the feedback I provided was based upon my industrial experience as to how those grids should come together. And we met in your office and went through that, and talked sometimes on the phone and everything else, so that you'd had the background. What I'm worried about is if we start making knockoff, one-off, multiple changes to this, it's going to be much more difficult to get into final form, whatever grid we want to go to.
Let me ask this question then, based on the original grid work we did, and, and I will only step back and say, we stale, we stalled on doing that grid because we couldn't get consensus and agreement on which way to administer it or how to change it.
I don't think we discussed it.
Yes, we did.
We, we did discuss it.
We did certainly discuss it several times, but we never got anywhere. And I think it was real, more wrapped around not the, the grid itself, but how do we measure and what's that going to work? Because we're no longer moving through a, just a program of steps, right? Which is, now it's more about pay for performance and, and, and value, I guess.
Right, and this is within an existing grid.
Right, this is just, this is only moving.
But I see what Mr. Byron's saying.
Right, go ahead.
But I, I also, uh, recognize that many departments, when someone reaches a level of paramedic, does, do incentivize that performance and bring them up at least a grade or two because of the level of work involved and because of the recertification requirements that are involved. So maybe, um, and I do remember discussing this, and I, and I, and, and is it our fault that this, we didn't bring this forward ahead of time? That we could have solved this easier than, than now? And, and could his position be in the crosshairs of us not being able to?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, my, my question, Jason, is based on that, that grid that we were starting to work on, I know we look in LGC data and all this stuff, it's around towns, what was a paramedic salary or the hourly wage? And compare it to what we're actually increasing it to, because to your point, if we raise it well above it, well, we, we kind of mess ourselves up.
Then you've now hung yourself out on a position that's out of whack with everything else.
But if we're, but if we're bringing it in, if we're bringing it into a range where it's still underneath that number or on par with that number within the, because it's a scale of, you know, it was the, the mid, you know, low, high, mid, we're trying to arrange people to be somewhere in the mid of it. You know, if that's where it was, I, we need to know the dollar amount.
Okay, so in our current grid, because I guess, I, one of the things I'd point out, in our current grid, which, yes, we, you know, we have not, um, we have acknowledged it has some issues, but we are moving people, we haven't shelved that grid. We're moving people through across on longevity. Now, what this would do, I found my, my current grid, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, is, uh, he, he's, he's in the eight-year block, so he's in, uh, you know, one of our highest blocks in terms of tiers of service on our current schedule, uh, twenty-two ninety-two. This would go to twenty-five oh-one.
Twenty-two ninety-two, and he would, and he would go to twenty-five what?
Twenty-five oh-one.
Twenty-five oh-one, and that is, if I look at.
Now, if you go to the schedule that, um, we last talked about in October.
Yep.
Um, that had a, um.
What was the medium?
A start, um, a start of twenty-one eighty-three, a mid of twenty-four fifty-six, a high of twenty-seven twenty-nine. So.
So it's put him in the mid.
We're, we're, we're in the ballpark.
Below the mid-range.
We're in the ballpark, we're, and, and remember, on, on our current scale, he's near the far, he's near, he's near the far end in terms of years of service, we're at, you know, he's, he's near one of our max points.
He's at almost close to the ten-year mark.
Right, he's at the ten, and then he'll be at that plateau for the next ten years, so.
Change the, the wage schedule.
Um, so it, it's in the, but, it, it is in that, it is in that same, it is in that same ballpark, um.
What you're proposing is to bring him into a, basically a nine-point-one percent increase.
What I'm proposing is to move him up one grade, um, based on the grade that he has been in, now that it has been two-plus years since he completed a paramedic certification.
For a nine-point-one percent increase, correct?
Uh, sure, if you want, yeah.
Thank you.
That's a good raise, two dollars and nine cents an hour in this day and age. I'm not saying he doesn't deserve it, because I read, in fact, I read it the other day, and I thought, nine, it seemed like nine-tenths of our fire calls are EMT calls, and I'm sure that everybody wants to be, you know, treated and helped and so forth.
I just want to be clear, that this is not a raise that's based on performance. This is a raise that's based on a completion of extensive training and certification. That is, it is a change in the role. His current wage is based on his, his certification as a firefighter. Uh, what is being proposed is based on a certification of a paramedic and two years of service to the town from that point, um, being paid as a firefighter, but services a paramedic. The Chief's recommendation is to move it one grade up to differentiate it from the firefighter position.
So the twenty-two, uh, whatever that he, the rate that he's at now, it does not account for the extra training for paramedic?
That's a firefighter, that's a firefighter.
That is a firefighter level at seven years?
And other than longevity, he's got no other movement.
Yeah, that's the fi, that's the firefighter wage.
Okay.
That's grade nine.
What's the salary of Captain Nick? What's the salary of, um, Captain Nichol?
He's at thirty dollars and something a do- an hour, so. Captain Nichol is.
He is plateaued out at, um.
Yeah, he's, he, he makes thirty, thirty dollars and sixty-one cents an hour.
Because his, he is at, um, he is at grade twelve.
Yeah, so it's still plenty of room for.
Right, and so this is a proposal to go from grade nine to grade ten.
Any other discussion? Actually, wait, there's no motion yet, so. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any other discussion?
I feel that we're doing this, and we oughta be looking at what we're doing overall and trying to make sure that it fits in, and I don't think we have that data.
My, I, I agree with you, absolutely, Byron, I, I absolutely agree with you. My only hesitation is that I believe a couple of years ago when the town approved the funds to send the incumbent to the certification, I, I thought that there was a certain level of expectation that there would be some type of, of, uh, recognition and reward for certification with the hours. I think it's twenty-two hundred hours, I think, of, of training in, in the ability. And I, I think going forward, I think you are a hundred percent correct. I'm just hesitant because this individual's gone through the training and has been in this, functioning this way for two years, and I would certainly hate to not somehow reward that level of commitment, um, because I know what that level is, and, and it's.
But he was being tra- paid while he was in training also.
Sure, but the.
But he's been out of training for two years.
As are the police officers too.
Yeah, I realize that.
And, and they're rewarded at, at certain levels also, and I, I think it's only fair that we do that, because I believe there was an expectation there, but I, like I said, I also agree with Frank's assessment.
So I agree with Frank's assessment too, I.
But I wanna pay this, I wanna go move forward with this.
And I think we just heard that based on the, the chart that we had looked at in the past, that we hadn't really come to a complete agreement on, we're in the mid-range where we're trying to bring people to, as it is, for a paramedic, fire, paramedic firefighter. It recognizes Jim for the, for the services given to the town for the past couple of years, since, you know, leaving paramedic training and becoming a full paramedic. Um, it's well within the department's range of, of, of full-time firefighters, so, you know, he's got a captain that's there. He's, you know, it's not gonna be grossly overpaid or in that sense, which was, which we're always concerned about, um.
I'd like to make an amendment. The amendment is that we will move firefighter Ray from twenty-two ninety-two to a salary of twenty-four dollars effective immediately, and that, uh, he will be raised September first, two thousand thirteen, to twenty-five oh-one, which is the grade, what is it, Mr. Hope?
Ten.
Grade ten, step.
So you're doing incrementally.
Grade ten, yeah, yeah, grade ten, step eight.
Yeah, his goal is to be able to get it close to what we think it's gonna be, we work on the plan. I guess is a viable.
It's a compromise, I think.
I'll second the amendment.
I could go with that.
Okay, so, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Um, now back on the amended motion to, it's twenty-four or something, right?
Twenty-five oh-one.
No, twenty-five is what it'll be at the end, but what's the first?
Twenty-four dollars, he said.
Twenty-four dollars an hour.
Immediately and twenty-five oh-one, I believe, September first.
So, on the main, the amended motion to increase Jim Ray's, uh, salary from existing, which is twenty-two oh, twenty-two ninety-two to twenty-four dollars immediately, and as of.
September first.
Yeah, thank you, September first, two thousand thirteen, to increase it to twenty-five oh-one. Any discussion?
I think from now on, we should definitely have in our warrant articles, when you ask people how much the increase is going to be. I think, I mean, I'm pretty sure the fire department can hold all these things in their budget now, but we are gonna be on a default budget, and I'm just want, making sure way deep in my heart that I want them to, to keep on that total budget that they were approved in March.
They, they have to, so, they will.
Are there any other changes in the fire department that are gonna be coming forward?
It's sad that we didn't hear about this before, it would've been an excellent time at deliberative session to bring those things up. That's one reason why we have deliberative sessions, is so the public can hear. I don't like to try to do something once you've got something in, I like to try to have it open and let the people know, and I think they would've gone along with it.
So the, I think that, sorry, um, I think the answer to your question is, are any further changes? As, I think as we develop the new salary schedule, there will be other changes, because we do have other, other staff that's gonna be impacted by those changes, so, but will be.
But they have to be on an individual basis, yeah?
Well, what I'm really asking is, Mr. Hope, are you having any further discussions with the chief on changes in the fire department?
Or any other department, I wanna know.
On what, wages or, or spending overall?
Yeah.
I understand you're having discussions on spending, that's perfectly natural, but my question really deals with changes to employee salary.
Um, at this point, I'm, there, there shouldn't be any further, other than people moving through the way, moving through, we agreed on step scale, step scale. Um, this was the situation, said, wait a minute, you know, it, I mean, this, this bubbled up because, you know, we were ready to do the normal step paperwork, which, if you, the chief's note says, you know, it's March twentieth, and then the question was, well, wait a minute, we've gone two-plus years since.
We recognize it for the paramedic.
Paramedic, this, we just can't keep pretending that it's a firefighter position, um, which is what brought this forward.
Okay. Anything else? Hey, all those in favor for the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one.
All right.
Um, Jason, based on the topic of the salaries and all that, um, can you bubble back up the salary ju- the salary plan we were working towards, get it out in the document section, so we can start reviewing it? Um, we'll look at where we're at as far as April and start planning on time to, to start talking through it again. If, if I recall correctly, the, the big hang-up was, how do you measure, how do you perform, you know? That we weren't really arguing, we weren't really having any heartache over the low, high, or mid. You know, the data was supported, we may wanna make some adjustments, but I think a lot of, if I recall, the discussion was really about, how do we move them through that process? And, um.
The situation was not how do we evaluate per se, the situation was how do we evaluate the position on an ongoing basis to adjust the grid?
Right.
Not the individual.
Right, it was really about how to measure each one of the positions we had and what the requirements were, at least that's, that's my notes on it anyway. So will we have, we'll have that discussion, we'll probably try to start getting it up in April, 'cause I think the sooner the late, sooner the better. 'Cause if we are gonna make a major change, we need to get that into the budget request coming, starting in August anyway. And I don't think we, we have any room in our budget to do any other real adjustments, to be honest.
Right, so, I mean, if we take the time to build the structure, that sets us up to put the numbers together. So, I mean, I understand, when we looked at it in October, we were, you know, it came up as a, hey, if we are going to roll something out, can we make the numbers work, and.
Yup.
It was more than made sense in that timeframe for us to look at.
Jay's here, by the way.
Yup, he is. So why don't we, um, we'll defer the rest of the conversation, let's bring Jay in.
Sure.
You wanna go get him?
Sure, yup.
These are all signed, I love when everything gets done. You've got your sign. I haven't had. You haven't signed those yet.
I did, but they haven't, oh, no, I did, I'm sorry, I got that one down.
Hey, Jay, how are you?
Good morning, good evening.
I know.
How are you, sir?
Come on up the front.
Ready for us?
Yup, come on, we're ready for you.
I'm gonna introduce you to Jamie Hage.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi, everybody.
Kevin Bork.
Nice to meet you. Jamie.
Yeah, I'm Ted Joyce.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Good.
John.
Hi, John.
How you doing? Jamie?
What are you doing?
Front of the mirror.
Kevin Bork, sorry.
Long time no see.
I mean, it's still gonna be signed by you.
Thank you.
All right.
So, how, what's the, what was the format we're gonna follow? Just have Jay introduce his firm and talk about the presentation he sent us, I guess, be that way to go.
I'm sorry, you want me to, uh, go over the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm interviewing for the job I've held for thirty-three years.
And we're gonna be really tough on you too.
Isn't that long?
It is. I have more institutional knowledge probably than anyone in town. I've been here so long, Albuquerque Avenue, it was just a, a plan at the time, right?
When I came in together, remember?
I do, I do. So I miss a lot of the old people who I've worked with all those years.
Easy now.
Um, our firm has, uh, seven lawyers in it, okay? You know a couple of them, uh, although there's been some change over, as you're well aware. Uh, and Jamie's a senior partner in the firm. Uh, Jamie, uh, is a, is one of the best litigators in the state, I can say that without any hesitation.
He can say that.
Uh, we have another senior litigator, Doug Miller, and I put their resumes in the package, 'cause you don't know either of them, but Doug is a former US prosecutor. So he worked for the federal government for about six, seven years, and then he went into private practice, so now he does a lot of our high-powered litigation, and he would handle any kind of police matters, criminal matters, police personnel issues, 'cause he has the US prosecutor background. Jamie is a expert in, uh, employment law, uh, business litigation, insurance matters, so he would be handling any litigation in those areas, not the regular run-of-the-mill issues, but more any, any, uh, issues that we ever got into controversy that weren't, of course, covered by your insurance carriers. Uh, Steve Buckley, you know Steve very well, Steve's obviously an expert, one of the leading experts in the state in planning issues, so he would continue to do zoning and planning issues. And I do a lot of other things, I represent library trustees, conservation commissions, uh, town clerk issues, tax collector issues, right-to-know issues, and I would continue to do those. I also do, of course, real estate matters, and so, we also have a lady in the office, Kathleen Davidson. She's been a lawyer for about four or five years, and she's doing a lot of employment law, so we would use her for employment law issues. So, you'd probably get a smattering of four to five lawyers in the firm, but primarily myself, Steve Buckley, and, uh, Jamie or Kathleen, depending on what came up. So, we offer you an array of expertise, a lot of experience, uh, we have a couple younger people, but mostly we have seasoned veterans, so you get all of that. We've been very responsive, uh, in thirty-three years, uh, we've pretty much, uh, performed everything you've ever asked us to do. Uh, very little complaints, if there is a complaint, we meet with you, we work it out, and we find out, uh, how to, how to meet you to your satisfaction. Um, we represent a number of towns, as you know, so that helps in representing a smaller town like Litchfield, 'cause the other towns are a little larger, uh, so if we have a project for one town, or we come across a major case, we provide you with that information, so, uh, the economy scales, lets us do that without a cost to you. But we keep your planning board advised, if there's a major planning board issue, keep your zoning board advised, if there's a major zoning board issue, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and, uh, we're pretty responsive, I think, uh, Jason has, uh, seen us in action. We get back to our clients within twenty-four hours, we try to do it on the same day. Obviously, we can't solve every problem or draft every letter or answer everything within twenty-four hours, but we get back to the client to let them know what's going on and how long things will take. So, uh, you know, I think, uh, we've done a good job in all these years, and I would, uh, uh, and I, I have a great fondness for the town. To me, it's this little treasure that still has, I always explained to Jamie, who drove down.
It was great, I gotta hear it.
The farmland and all the things, it's just a unique little, little town that sort of got spared the development craze, not totally, but to a degree, uh, from other towns in southern New Hampshire.
Okay. Any, do they have any questions?
Yes, if they call, for instance, Jason calls, will it be you? Probably, because I know you, and I feel more confident that you would be, uh, first person. In other words, unless it was something specific like in planning, and you said you had to have Steve Buckley or whatever, or Jamie or whatever, then would you be the one that we would contact?
Yes, I've been the contact person now for the last few months, and I, you know, I had been that for many, many years. Uh, yes, that's the way we would do it, but obviously, if it's an issue involving the police department and I've given it to Doug, then I'd want the contact to be with Doug, that type of thing, because no sense in going through someone else when you already know that person is responsible for that area of the law, but yes, I would be the, I'd be the delegator within the firm again.
And we do that for, of, a number of our clients, one of, one of the lawyers will be the point person, the contact person, and then that person decides who best can handle it if the point person doesn't, doesn't think he or she's the best person for that, for that particular job.
Right, 'cause we represent a number of corporations.
General, yeah, small corporations, that are, they're similar to towns, because you get a contract issue, you get an employment issue, what do we do about this, insurance issue, so we're used to kinda multitasking. Now, Jay and I, Jay's been a lawyer a couple of years more than I have, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm a rookie compared to Jay. Uh, but between us, you know, we've got.
He doesn't look that old.
Yeah, right, between us, I mean, thirty-six years in practice, thirty-four years in practice, and, uh, almost all of it for each of us has been in private practice. Uh, I, I worked for the city of Concord, uh, did both their prosecuting in the early year, early years, and also did some of their zoning work. Then I went to the city of Manchester and worked for them as a city prosecutor and handled some of their stuff on the civil side. And then in private practice, I've, I've done a, uh, a variety of, uh, mostly civil business and civil, civil litigation over the years, and we've been on both sides of issues, so, you know, if the, the, somebody wants to sue the town, we, we've, we've had to defend before. If the town wants to sue somebody, we've represented plaintiffs before. So we have really a broad range of, of experience really to, to, to tap into. Um, I, recently, we were, and I think it's mentioned in the, in the materials, we were, um, we were retained a special counsel to the city of Nashua to handle, uh, some tax, uh, appeals. The hospitals, uh, in the city of Nashua, uh, wanted to, uh, apply for charitable tax exemption status, and so they hired us a special counsel to litigate those matters, and, uh, Jay, Jay and I handled those. And then we recently were retained by the city of Keene, and we're doing the same thing for the city of Keene, and we're, we're helping the city of Hudson with a, with a similar situation. So, both in terms of the general matters that come up and specialty issues, uh, we're, we're very, uh, well-equipped, uh, to, to help and handle the needs. And more than anything else, we, we are, we like to communicate with our clients, so we wanna know if we're responsive, if we're doing a good job, and if you have a problem, we wanna know about it. We don't run, run away from problems, it's our job to confront them and deal with them. So, that's kinda been our philosophy throughout our careers, and, uh, so we welcome the opportunity to continue to serve you.
Okay.
And the other advantage, as you know, I've, I'll appear at the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, so we've got a little expertise there. Uh, we'll do, uh, we've dealt with all the state agencies, so we don't have to farm a lot out. We are able to, between us, delegate the work, and that, that's helpful.
All right, any questions, any other questions?
I have a whole series of questions, as you probably suspected.
No, I didn't expect it, I just.
We're half hours up, I thought.
Oh, I'm just kidding, stop.
You know, you have it easier than I think anybody else coming in, 'cause we have a history with you, we under, we know.
Right.
Your work style, and so it's a lot easier, but, go ahead, Frank.
Um, uh, uh, the questions deal with, um, you mentioned that you've got a broad breadth of experience, and you also work with quite a few towns, that's a blessing, but it's also a curse. Because the town next door to us, Hudson, who, if you look at it from a logistical point of view, is probably the town that we would have the most dealings with and the most chances of having problems with. Um, I think they're your client, as.
They are.
You've mentioned, so that creates a problem, how, how do you propose to deal with that?
Well.
I mean, if we're sitting here discussing as a board, and, and I'm not saying that this is happening, but if we were sitting here discussing as a board, we should take some legal action that involves. I mean, if we're sitting here discussing as a board, and, and I'm not saying that this is happening, but if we were sitting here discussing as a board, we should take some legal action that involves Hudson. What are we going to do?
Okay. Well, that's a legitimate question, and obviously if it arose, we would have to recuse ourselves from that, okay? And that would be true of Hudson as well. But the only area where it's ever really been an issue is with the water system and the wells. Okay? And, it's, it's never, it never came to blows, and I don't really anticipate it being, especially now with the, the Nashua having taken over the water systems. But, so, I, I can see where you might say, is that a problem? But, our experience is it hasn't been. Do you know what I mean? I never had to actually recuse myself from either town's activities and that. I wouldn't get involved in a discussion if though, if it came up, though, I would have to. So, it really hasn't been. You are neighbors, but it's not unusual for one firm to represent a couple of adjoining towns. It's rare that towns will get into a fight, unless it's a planning issue with a road that connects the two towns. But usually that's something that we try to get the planning boards to work out between them.
Yeah, the other side of the coin, Frank, is that there's, just as, it's just as possible that, that the towns are going to need to work together to solve an issue. And if they're working not in an adversary way, but together, the fact that we have a relationship with both towns might actually help facilitate an agreement. But, as lawyers, we, we have to, we encounter potential conflicts in a variety of different contexts. And in the, in the question that you posed, as Jay said, that would be a conflict. And we're, we're bound by the code of professional responsibility to recuse ourselves, withdraw from that situation. We wouldn't be able to represent Hudson against Litchfield, or Litchfield against Hudson, or advise either against the other with respect to that issue. And in fact, we wouldn't even make a recommendation to either of you about who you might consult with, with respect to that issue. We would just bow out. But, that could, that could, so, we're, we're used to dealing from time to time, you have to deal with conflicts. But as Jay said, I mean, you've been town council for ten years with, with Hudson?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Well
So
At least.
And thirty-four or five years with, with Litchfield, so.
Whenever you take on a client, I, I, people don't appreciate from a lawyer's standpoint, but you have to give up someone else. And let me explain that. Whenever someone calls, say, I've got to complain against such as landlord, we have to check, did we ever represent this person? And if we did, we can't take this caller coming in. And when we take on a town as a client, we can't take on any, any developers who work in that town. We can't take on any, anybody who's got a criminal matter, if they've been picked up for DWI or any kind of, we can't, we can't take any against. So, whenever we take a town, we have to give up any work in that town because we're representing mis-sellies. So, there's always the trade-off when you take on a client.
I've heard this board, on many occasions, say that no matter what we get into, in terms of legal situations, we always lose. Okay? And I guess, there seems to be, on the part of some members of the board, a supposition or a feeling that maybe we didn't get the best advice upfront telling us that we shouldn't take on this case because it's not in our best interest to do so, and we should settle or take some other course of action. How do you respond to that? I mean, if you look back through some of the cases that we've had together?
All right. I, I don't know the particulars, but the only thing I can say is, it's rare that the town is suing someone. It's usually the town is being sued. Let's face it. Planning board. Planning board's never going out suing them. They're always being attacked by someone who's unhappy with the plan they've approved. So we're defending. And sometimes they've made a mistake, sometimes we're not on the right side. But I, I think we have a pretty good track record with them. Same thing with the zoning board adjustment. The zoning board adjustment, never is the plaintiff. It's always the defendant. Someone, either the abutter's disgruntled, or the applicant's disgruntled, so they're bringing suit. So, and that's true of almost everything. It's rare that the town, I'm trying to think if we've been, well, there's been a couple occasions maybe, where we've gotten ourselves into something where we may have been the plaintiff. But, it's rare. So, we're not choosing to end up in court. We're, we're usually the defendant defending, and sometimes you're going to lose us. You are. Because if one of your boards, one of your commissions has not dotted the i's, crossed the t's, there's a chance. But, I'm trying to think of, if we ever have to sue for money damages, you know, I think we've done okay on any cases
No, I don't think there's anything that we've had to do in terms of taking action. I, I think it's mostly, as you said
Defending.
Trouble comes to us.
Right. And that's how it works in a town. We, we're always the second party to the suit. It's always someone versus us.
But it's usually, and, and the point I was trying to make, it's usually a situation where we get into where you get some type of advice that says, yeah, you've got a good case to defend against this, you should consider, you know, continuing with this case, or whatever. And we end up in Superior Court, or we end up wherever we have to go as to taking a beating or something.
Well, I, I, again, I, I don't know the specifics, Frank, and I would, I would happy to discuss any case, but I'm pretty practical in my advice. I try to avoid litigation because I think, I think it's a thankless task half the time, and it gets expensive. And I try to guide the town so we don't run into those situations personally. I can't speak for everyone else because I don't, I don't supervise every case, okay? So I don't know. But my, my goal would be to avoid litigation when I can, and give you a true evaluation. If I think it's a bad case, I'm going to, I'm going to advise you not to spend the money on it, to try to resolve it short, as soon as we can. Because, I, I see it all the time in my private practice. I'll have a case, we, we're going to get a thirty thousand dollar judgment for the client, but they're going to spend twenty-five thousand to get to it. And that's not a happy result.
Right.
So I try to be very practical with, with client's money, and, and how to, how to defend or prosecute a case.
One of the other questions that I have is that, you know, David LaFever left us, I hope you're aware. And, and David was one of the attorneys whom I know the town had a close relationship to, because he was more frequently the contact between the town and everything else. What is your intention in terms of replacing David's role with, that used to be, the role that used to be filled by David with someone new, or how's that going to work?
Well, it's a combination. I will be primarily taking on a lot of the tasks that he performed, for one. We probably are going to add another lawyer to the firm. We're seven now, we had been eight. We'll probably replace, but we're looking for the right person. We're not sure whether we want a person with enough experience. If someone came along who was right, we probably would take them. Or if we want to start training another person. And that's why I mentioned a couple of the other people, like Kathleen Davidson, you haven't met her, but she would be taking on some of the personnel issues that David had handled. Doug would take on the police responsibilities and criminal issues. So, that's how we would, we would change it. There'd be an evolution now. And that happened before. Before David, I don't know if you remember, Heather Burns was, was here with us for a number of years. She was a primary contact person for the town for a number of years. Then she left, and then I went back in, and I became primary, and then I trained Heather again. And she became, and then Dave, I'm sorry, then David came in. And then, so I sort of stepped back and let them run it to, for a degree. And so now we'll go through that evolution again. But yeah, there's seven of us. So it's not, we don't have an immediate need, but we'll probably hire another person.
One of the people who we also deal with, and I'm going to speak for myself now, is Steve Buckley. And Steve has been doing a lot of work in the areas what it sounds like is, oh, not sounds like, but what is, mostly zoning, those types of things. And from my personal perspective and my interactions with Steve, he is, let's see if I can say this correctly, very frustrating to deal with. He is not communicating well, at least from my perspective, when I've tried to get legal opinion on zoning issues or what have you. And I hear in the discussions that the various committees, boards, and whatever have about Steve's opinion, is a lot of confusion. And I'll give you an example, is several years ago, when we started taking on the issue of impact fees, we were getting advised by Steve, and it was very, very confusing to the boards, the planning board as well as the board of selectmen at the time, as to what it is we had to do. And there was a lot of frustration that came about because of that. Quite honestly, if I had to lay that out there, my concern is that I'm not sure that Steve is the right attorney to help this town. And I'll say it bluntly. I don't know whether you want to put comments out on that, or what you want to do about that, but that's my concern with, um, working with your firm. In particular, is the interactions that the town has had with Steve.
Well, it's important that you tell us that. Because we, we, we would know that unless the client says they're not comfortable. And, and that happens. I mean, there's personality clashes. People aren't, don't like the style of a particular lawyer, or they don't like the way they communicate. That's important for us to know. And if we know that, and a client says they would rather not have that person handling a matter, we, we would reassign it. So, yes, you need to communicate with us on that. We, I, I would not know that though, because if he goes to a meeting, I don't go to it. And I don't know the response. But obviously, I need that, I need that feedback. As supervisor of the firm, I need to know that.
Yeah, I, I
And I can, I can delegate and control that.
I think that that was passed on, so it's
I never
Well, I don't know if it was given to
We're at the charge at the time, I don't think.
I don't think it was given, um, what I'm assuming is that it wasn't necessarily given to you, that's all.
So, again, if Jason says to me that's, that, there's a marching order a certain way, we can handle that.
Okay. And I guess, Frank, I would say that, because a lot of the town work was delegated to Steve and Dave, if any one of you were ever unhappy with the work of any of them, we would have addressed it. And frankly, going forward, you know, any work that Dave or Steve have handled, between Jay and I, we could certainly handle it. And I think we, we could satisfy your concerns.
And that would help us know that, because I just said, we're thinking about getting another person? We could gear the person to meet some of those needs.
Anybody else have any other questions?
No, sir.
Lawyers in general just frustrate me, but that's okay.
They frustrate me, too.
Until you need them.
That's true, and I haven't, I haven't not needed them, so I guess I'm in good shape at this point. Just to kind of build off, I, I think the, you know, working with Attorney Buckley, and even with LaFever, it was always felt like the position that he would give us would be sort of soft, right? Could go either way, but, and it just, when you sit here as a layperson going, do I say yea or nay? It's like, I just want a hard yes or no.
You want a decision.
I want a decision, then, because I want the decision that's actually been made based on that, it's defendable, too.
Right.
And, you know, nothing against either one of them. I, I think, you know, Attorney Buckley, he's got a difficult task dealing with some of the things he's dealing with, too, and trying to advise us, so. But, that's my take on it. But again, like I said.
And sometimes there just aren't clear-cut answers. You know, we like to think that, well, we're lawyers, know the law, it's either black or white. And a lot of times, it, there are shades. And you, and it's, it, they're difficult, they're difficult questions, but
Well, I, I think David, and I appreciate why he did this. He would not want to, and he clearly said at times to me, that it is not my job to make the decisions for the town. And I fully support and understand that. So he would, when he wrote his opinions to us, would write them saying, you can go down this path and this is what it means, or you can go down this path and this is what it means. And I think that some members of various boards and committees were frustrated by that. That's not the situation I was expressing with Steve. That's something totally different. Okay? So I don't want you to think that, at least from my perspective, the information I was getting from David was pretty clear. And, and it was really a decision that we as a board would have to make, or the committees, or planning board, or whatever it was, that was working on, what have you at the time, as to which route we wanted to take and where we wanted to end up.
I, I understand, and it's a frustration. Sometimes I want a board to make a decision, but, again, I have to hold, sort of hold back, and I, because I'm not the decision-maker. I want to give them guidance, I want to be their advocate and their counsel, but they do have to make the decision.
Right.
And sometimes we don't have the decision, really. I'm thinking of the time that Will and I collected soda cans and brought them to Lowell. Do you remember that one?
Yeah.
I called and asked, is it going to be legal? Sure, go ahead, you can do that. Well, we collected, every place we could think of, we went to the races in Loudon, collected bags of them, brought them to Lowell for our dog kennel. And we got a hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And a week later, I get a letter from Massachusetts State telling me to give back that hundred and eighty-eight dollars, or I'm going to get killed, hailed into court.
Oh, my God.
So sometimes it is frustrating when you think you're doing, and I did get permission, and that was what really bothered me. I thought, boy, if I made that decision as a special ed teacher, somebody would
Pat, see, you didn't tell them you were going to cash them in. They just thought, you said, you just asked if you could bring them to Lowell. Okay?
I brought them
Now, give the attorneys a break. You didn't tell them you were getting the money for it.
I brought the money back, and I had, I can remember Cecile signing it, and, oh, I couldn't believe it. So at that point, I decided, boy, I don't know about lawyers. I think that I'll do something different than that.
See, you almost created a, she could have gone to jail for that.
That's right. I could have still bet now.
Any other questions for these gentlemen?
So, I guess
But I really want to make sure that you're going to be the first person that we contact. Is that right?
I will be.
Okay. Everybody heard that. Write that in your minutes.
And the first person to tell her, do not go to Lowell with a bunch of cans.
The, the, the change in the town since about four years ago, when Mr. Hope came on board, it's not been four years.
It hasn't been, it's only a little over a year.
I was blonde when I started this job here. I had hair when I started mine.
It's close enough to four years. But, the, the question is, in terms of the way we utilize attorneys, has changed since Jason's come on board? And it has been significant. And what I wanted to understand is, from your perspective, how will that change the way we deal with you on a contract-type basis? In your opinion?
Oh, I, I think it's been a big, a, a, big advantage to the town. Remember, we were on, we were on a retainer.
Right.
And when Jason came, the town didn't need to utilize the time. So, we talked, and basically we said, let's do away with the retainer, because it wasn't to your advantage anymore. And so, now it's a straight hourly basis, and it's much, I think it's much better. Your, your fees should be significantly reduced. And, of course, development is down. So your planning board's not as active, your zoning, so your, your overall fee should be down significantly. And I, I think, I, I don't think you need a retainer right now. I think Jason has really solved a lot of the everyday problems in terms of needing, needing us to do things. So that's been a big benefit. And I even told him that the other day.
Okay.
Good. No, I don't think
Anything else?
Well, all said, thank you.
Well, I thank you both for your time. I appreciate it.
All right.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Drive carefully in Litchfield.
Soon as you get out of the elskirts, do whatever you want.
I'm sure you use your directional lights.
And don't go to Lowell.
Yeah, don't throw your trash out.
Bye-bye, have a good one.
Thank you very much.
All right, picking back up on the agenda, let's see. We left off at wage adjustment per contract?
Yeah, wage adjustment per contract.
And the contract, this is your wage adjustment for contract?
This is, this is my wage adjustment.
Okay.
My contract calls for adjustment on my wage April 1. Since we have some uncertainty at this point, I'm suggesting that that adjustment be deferred until we sort out the various budget issues.
We rolled all the bids, did for you.
Okay. And when it's clear, we can deal with the result and wrap whatever paperwork and amendment we need around that. But, you know, we're not really having another working meeting to get into the nuts and bolts of those numbers until that would become active, so.
Okay, so you're asking us to defer your, your increase?
Right.
You're volunteering to defer it?
Right, I'm volunteering to defer it until we sort everything else out.
Thirty days, sixty days? What do you think is reasonable?
We'll call it sixty days. I'll take it, that, I think that buys us enough time to figure out where we're going. Thank you.
All right, I'll, well, I guess, I should, probably should make a motion and do this. So I'll make a motion that we, per the town administrator's request, defer his contract increase from April 1st, sixty days out, which will put it to June 1st, right? April, yeah, June 1st.
Thirty days, April.
Sixty days. Sixty days, so move it out to June 1st.
Second. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, she made it in second. Any, any discussion?
Yeah. Are you, when you say you're deferring, are you deferring a decision on it? Or, you know, there's all different types? Or are you saying you will take X months off of your contract? Is that what you're
No, 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 I'm
I want to understand the difference, because
You have it on
What I'm hearing this motion say is that you will not get is that you will not get anything until June 1st, and that's, I want to make sure that that's.
Okay, let me, let me be clear. Between April 1st and the end of the year, based on my contract, you know, there would be an additional eighteen-hundred-seventy-five dollars paid to me over the course of that time. Okay, what I'm suggesting is that, as I put some of the numbers together, you know, I'm looking at some scenarios where, you know, my recommendation would be to not take all of that over the balance of the year. So, to leave, to leave some of that raise on the table for the year.
And that's what I.
That's what I've.
That was, when I, when I seconded it, that was, thank you for clarifying it, but I was under that impression.
And just to be clear, too, this increase in April 1st was an automatic contract agreement.
That's, that's built into the contract, and there's no, and, you know, what I'm looking at is, I'm happy to do my part, you know, and there's no back-end, shorten the contract by a month, or make it up on the back-end, or whatever else. I'm looking at, in this calendar year, you know, we're looking at ways to, you know, shave some money, take care of the things we need to take care of. I'm offering to do my, my part.
That's why I thanked you.
Until the dust is settled, I don't know what those numbers will be.
Does he have a guilty conscience of some reason?
No, he does not have a guilty conscience.
Oh, Mr. Byron, shame on you.
And as soon as we get through this motion, I'll bring up my motion. Any other discussion? Is all those in favoring deferring Mr. Hope's planned increase till June 1st? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero zero. Now, on that same trend, I'll bring it up. As much, as I think everybody knows, I'm pretty passionate, well, pretty passionate about the fact that we have many employees that have been stuck at the top of the rage because they've been here twenty-plus years, and they're not getting any cost of living adjustments. And they have actually received some significant increases in their pay, significant increases in their health benefits and all that, that are causing them to actually get a reduced paycheck, right? I, for one, would like to go without my selectman's salary this year and have that, have those proceeds deferred into the general salary fund to pay out a, what we define as longevity bonus. Some dollar amount, one time only, saying, we thank you for your service, it doesn't make up the difference, but it will say that, you know, myself, anyway, anybody else wants to chime on.
Yep.
You know, thank you for your service.
But you, we can't do that because it was a Warren article, and the no means no.
The Warren article was for a COLAR, which is a consistent increase. I'm talking about just a one-time, you know, two-hundred-dollar, here you go, thank you for your service, and go from there. And it's coming out of our salary, so it's not actually going to affect anybody else's.
Okay, how about if we were to work on a program, then rather than just piecemeal it like that, how about if we were to, the state has a program, and I'm working on one where I am, that would reward longevity by that specific type of program? Rather than just piecemeal it, ask our town administrator to, you may be familiar with what the state does. You know, it's so many years you get a set amount for a longevity.
I wasn't trying to create a program, I was just, one year, thank you for your service, we haven't been able to get you a cost of living increase over the last couple of years. We recognize that, our health insurance costs are going up to you, we recognize that, just here's a small thank you. It doesn't, it doesn't increase their base salary, it doesn't increase their yearly salary, it's a one-time payout.
And certainly, I understand that, and I would appreciate that also, but there are a whole mess of people in that boat, too, inside and outside of the town. And, and I'm just concerned, because the townspeople voted, they were clear in how they voted, and I, I know where you want to go.
Brett, what I'm struggling with, and I have someone in the back, you know, also commenting, too, but what I'm struggling with is, I'm not asking to increase taxes, I'm taking money, it's already been approved, it goes to us. We're foregoing, I'm the one making the most at this point, signing on, but I'm foregoing whatever I make, the twelve-hundred dollars a year that I make, I think they already paid out once, so whatever the difference is, put it into a kitty and say, I want to reward the folks that had, the folks that, don't get the step movements and all that because they're at the top of their range, and give them just a thank you. Now, maybe it's wrong, maybe it's the wrong way to present it, but we've been trying to do something, we haven't done anything.
I think it's a great idea, I just, I would rather put together a plan and fund it, and do it for everyone that is in that boat, and continue the program.
Yeah, but that, to me, conflicts with the no means no with the COLAR, I'm not trying to do that, I'm just trying to do a one-time-only thing. But if there's no support for it, there's no support for it, but.
How many are there, that's what I'm concerned.
There's like five or six.
I think Jason shouldn't be able to tell us that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I would say probably six.
I think you're talking about.
Over twenty years or whatever.
Yeah, I think you're talking about five or six, is the way that our schedule is put together. And that's why I'm just trying to look quickly to try to figure out when we last updated this.
And I told Jason I wasn't going to bring this up till next week.
Yeah, we hit a plateau, people hit a plateau between ten and twenty. So, we have people in that plateau, they move, they move and they get an increase each year in the step, they hit ten, they hit a plateau, they ride that plateau out to twenty, and then there's one more change at twenty, and then they're indefinitely at that point. So, you know, I think where you're talking, most likely, you know, I'm doing a quick look here, you probably have about five that have been sitting at that plateau. Now, we have some getting to that plateau.
I'm not worried about that.
You know, then they've been moving, they're hitting that now, but we have, we have several, you know, who've served the town twenty-plus years, who have been at that plateau for a little while now.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to create a program that's going to be ongoing and have to be funded, I'm just saying.
No, I think he can't.
One-time, one-time deferment.
Definitely can't.
You know, I'll speak my mind, and that is, I propose cutting the salary of the board of selectmen and whatever, and got chastised for it, now we're proposing that we won't take any salary, and.
And give it to.
That's great. Now, and on, that's one point. The other point is, we're again in a situation where we're talking about some type of a need for a program to be put in place, and we ought to be taking the programs that we started to develop and finish those off and come out with it. Third point is, once this board made a decision to go forward with the salary, I signed up through the town of Litchfield to have all of my salary put into a healthcare savings account, which now uses that money to pay for my healthcare and my wife's healthcare that we get through other means for medications and everything like that. It saves the town money, and it saves me money. And now what you're talking about is defunding that, which increases my healthcare costs.
Wait, 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 Frank, hang on one second. The only reason I even brought it up was because you've tried to zero out the number every year, and we've.
And I have no.
And I, let me just finish. I've been against the fact of zeroing out the board of selectmen's salary, or stipend, was what it is, because it puts a zero value to what we do, that's all. Again, I'm, my only intent was to at least try to address some of the concern we had, some of the concerns that we have with some of our employees, without impacting the bottom line of default budget, without impacting, making a longer program, to say one time, thank you very much for your service. Doesn't sound like I have any support from the board to do that, that's fine.
Mr. Chan, I have a concern, I've said this before, and I'll say it again. The town of Litchfield had an ideal salary schedule years ago, because I happen to work on the committee that formed it. It had, it had seven merit steps, and it had seven longevity steps, and it worked out to thirty years. It was a, it was a great salary schedule, it was a great, they combined merit and longevity into one. It was a twenty-something grade fourteen-step program. It worked successfully. Then, at some point, there was a vote to compress it down so that these wages would be paid earlier, upfront. Now, we want, you know, now, because they haven't got the cost of living, some of them, we want to reverse that somehow. I applaud your effort. I would much rather go back to a salary schedule that had longevity in it, go back to where the town was before, it worked. People started, they knew when they finished their career after twenty-five or thirty years, that they were still getting increases, the increases took a little longer, but they knew exactly, if they completed their merit, their seven-year merit, they knew exactly when their longevity steps were going to come. Rather than do it, I guess, piecemeal, I would much rather go back to that type of schedule. I would much rather have the employees know exactly, over the term of their employment, what they'd be having. We wouldn't be having these discussions.
Agreed.
So, I'm, I'm, my focus would be returned to a salary schedule that would address this for all employees from now out.
I don't think I actually made a motion, right?
No, you talked about it.
I talked about it, so I won't make a motion. I think what this is going to do is it's going to put the salary planning, the program, back on top of the priority list, because it feels like at least three of us, anyway. Did I make a motion?
No, it was his.
Okay.
You made a motion?
No, I did not.
No.
Yeah, I snuck in when Terry was swearing people in.
I think, you know, the results can, if we, if we take a look at our salary plan, our salary schedule, and we re-level it or reset it, that addresses the problem, too.
I'd much rather do that.
My only, my only, and I agree, I think longer-term, I agree with that, too. My only intent was, there are a few folks that have had, you know, that hadn't had anything over a couple of years. I wasn't trying to surpass, before anybody else, I wasn't trying to surpass the COLAR, because to me, was, this was not a consistent, you get a ten-cent raise, and you get it for the rest of your life in this job. It was a, I'm going to give you a hundred fifty bucks, thank you, go take your wife or husband out for dinner. That's what I was thinking of.
And certainly, I don't think anyone thinks that your intentions were anything less than honorable.
Well, that's all they ever are, anyway, but.
And, and I agree with you.
Okay, all right, so enough of that discussion. We will make sure the wage schedule gets put back on the priority. We will start discussing it in April, because it needs to.
That should be effective.
The personnel policy manual, it's got to be fixed, which we postponed.
Right, we approved the overall policy, but not the show.
Which was the issue of how do we do performance reviews? How do we do wage and salary?
Yep, we will do it, and I think we're going to have to have some work sessions to do it, too, because we can't do it in this format. It's just, we've got to hash it out and sit down and get it done, and then bring it forward. All right. All right, so we've deferred your salary, whatever, and then, let's see, default budget discussion.
Default. Last Wednesday and Thursday, I made a first pass at going through, kind of line by line, at how to restructure the budget to accommodate a default budget bottom line. I've tried to go line by line, looking at what our actual experience has been with nearly three months behind us, so we actually have real numbers in hand. And bear in mind that in some cases, those numbers you're looking at at the budget that sometimes we like to treat as gospel, were estimates six months ago. So, you know, we have real data in hand now and real experience behind us. In some cases, we've been trending under what we estimated at that time, so there's a potential offset there. And also, to be fair, in some cases, there are items where our estimates were low, and I've made those projected adjustments.
So, we've gone the other way, too.
So, you know, I'm not pretending that only things that go down count and pretend nothing goes up. You know, the kind of exercise that we normally do during a year when some things go well, some things don't go well. You know, and I fired many of those sort of first-line ideas past department heads, said, hey, am I off-base? What am I missing? What am I not seeing? What are you seeing? They've given me some constructive input, they've gone back and sort of sharpened their pencils in some cases, and given me some thoughts. So, I do need to take sort of another measured look beginning to end. Obviously, that was a pretty hurried exercise in two days to say, where are we? Do we need to make a dramatic course correction? I'm not seeing us at that point, but I, you know, I do want to make sure that all those numbers add up and the logic adds up, and then I can package those recommendations back up to accommodate that bottom line. So, you know, I think we can get there. There is certainly less margin for the unexpected and unanticipated than I'm normally comfortable with at this point. You know, now, you know, now, granted, of course, you know, I always, I always have the anxiety about wanting to make sure that we're all in a safe position, because, you know, regardless of where those numbers are, you guys, you know, you can't overspend that bottom. And part of my job is to protect you from getting into that dangerous spot, so I'm always looking to make sure there's some caution. It looks as if we're in reasonable shape. Now that said, there's, you know, we have that discussion, there are some caveats. And if you look at, you know, budget reports, where we're going, last year, we didn't have winter, it was great. This year, we've had a heck of a lot of winter. We've actually spent our salt budget in its entirety, so, you know.
Get in line.
You know, so, before, before town meeting even, Jack and I were talking about, okay, where are the, where are the trade-offs in his budget? Because we expect winter will happen again at the end of this year, if not tomorrow, so, you know.
Question, did you, or would you have started with last year's budget in each department and just?
No.
Or why would you not have started with last year's approved budget, which was basically default?
Because what.
Or take the default that you published.
Because the default, as you may recall, was derived by a series of mathematical exercises and rules that we applied to each line, which may or may not reflect the reality we have today. I could come up with a number, and we would, we would sort of overbalance in some areas and cut ourselves short in some other areas. So, you know, in my mind, the fair thing to do was to look at each department and say, where are we? Where do we need to go? How can we balance the numbers to achieve as much as we said we wanted to achieve within that bottom line?
But can you do that when the default budget is?
The default budget is one number bottom line, just like the approved budget is one number bottom line.
So, you're overlaying, you want to overlay a whole new, or several new lines within that?
No, I want to, I want to make sure that, yeah, I, I, right. I want to bring forward an operating budget that matches whatever bottom line with we end up with from the voters of the town, allocated across where we best can allocate those funds, knowing what we know mid-March of this year.
I think it's, this is, you know, if, we need to take a look at the budget, the overlays that we had laid out for priorities, and the spending that we thought that would need to be based on those priorities, and reassess what those priorities are in the default. Now, to your point, some of it may not have to change, some of it may have to change. At this point, he's still working on the exercise. I know that I asked you for a couple of different cuts at it. If, once that's ready, if you can get the revision up to everybody, let's start looking at it. We need to, once we know what happens to the recount, and my guess is it'll stay the way it is, you know, we'll be working within the default, and, you know, I think the default is a workable number, as you said, and we'll figure it out. But I think the point being is that we know what our large swaps of sections are. We need to figure out if those priorities still make sense based on what we're operating under. Especially now with the winter, I mean, here's the challenge, right? If we have a worse winter, that means road repair is going to be even higher next year. You know, patching, I know that Jack's been going through a ton of patch material just because the roads are beginning to fall apart with all the salt. Especially the roads that were already in bad shape as it was. So, that's going, we may have to move some money out of another department into highway just to deal with those issues, and we've got to look at that.
Well, and remember, we did, we did away with the undefined contingency. We did set up some reserve funds. One of those we set up last year was specifically for winter maintenance, for what happens if we have a bad winter.
But I, I mean, here's my challenge, though, it's only twenty thousand dollars, I believe.
Right, right, it's not going to.
What's the typical run rate for the first half of the winter when we have, we've already exhausted some of that money? I would rather keep that, I would rather not tap into the reserves until we exhausted any of our options throughout the budget. And that may mean pulling the, you know, belt tighter in one section to help another section, but at the end of the day, the bottom line's not impacted, services will not get impacted. You know, we'll try to do what we've got to do. We just got to look at those priorities again. You know, I don't think they're going to change very drastically, but there will be some difference.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not looking at complete, and I got, you know, I mean, my view is not sort of reopening and doing a complete overhaul in every budget. I mean, it's a couple of lines where our projections are right, or a couple of projections where, hey, I thought that was going to be a lot worse than it was, and things have turned out better. You know, in some simple things, you know, like one of the rules of thumb we use when we have a vacant position is that, you know, health insurance is the great unknown. You know, I mean, what do you budget for health insurance? So, you know, the approach I always take is I budget for a two-person plan, because that way I'm down the middle. If I get somebody who takes single coverage, we make up a little space. If we have somebody who takes family coverage, we lose a little space, and we hope we offset it through a slower bringing someone on. I've had a situation this year where the numbers didn't quite go in an advantageous way there. So, you know, some of those things we're also making up in this budget, so.
So, like I said, publish the revision, the default revision and those things we're talking about as soon as you're ready.
Yeah.
If you can, before the weekend.
Yeah, I should have it, I should have it up with actual notes by the end of the week. I mean, I did a mad dash to make the numbers work, but, you know, I'd like to make it so you guys aren't sort of guessing your way through, what was he thinking here? So, I can put a couple of notes with it.
The difference between the default and the budget that was proposed is like one point six percent.
Yeah, it's seventy-four thousand and something, I think.
Seventy-four thousand, I thought it was seventy-eight thousand.
I mean, it's not a huge.
No, it's not, it really, it really isn't, and that's why I'm saying, I think that's what his point was, is that, I think Jason's point is, is that we'll be okay. It's just that we had, we have some areas that, you know, we probably anticipated a light winter again, and we've got to move some money out of that.
My over-under dropped from a hundred and fifty to a hundred. My over and under dropped from a hundred and fifty to a hundred.
Yeah. Well, probably even lower than that, because we do, do a lot more cutting.
Yeah, I'll put it, I'll leave it in a hundred.
Okay. Well, we'll, as we get closer, we'll know what the trend's gonna be.
Please make sure that the minutes reflect this, because we'll come back to this towards the end of the year.
We will. You got money on it? All right. Jason, anything else from you, for you?
Anything else from me? Um. Not, unless, if anybody has any questions on the items I've put under the informational items, um.
Not for me.
Nope, pretty clear.
Yeah, tried to pass along some updates there. Uh, remember, our next meeting is, um.
Twenty-fifth.
Uh, twenty-fifth, real brief, um, you know, I'll probably have some consent items, and then our main purpose is interviewing the two firms.
Right. All right, next up is Selectmen Reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
I attended the zoning board meeting the other night, first time, I'd been there for quite a while, and I had two, um, items, and they both passed. It was a good meeting. People were happy in the general, and I think that they seemed
Okay.
Fair.
Good. They're always fair, anyway. Mr. Byron, anything to report?
Planning board meeting tomorrow night, seven o'clock, um, hearing a, um, case that's, uh, involving, um, the border of town down to the Hudson-Litchfield border, where we've got some lots in Hudson and some lots in Litchfield. So it's a joint approval by the Hudson and Litchfield Planning Board, so.
Is this the lots that gonna, the folks will be Litchfield residents, but will have Hudson addresses?
Mm-hmm.
On Old Dairy Road.
Wow, okay, that'll be confusing.
Yeah, nine-one-one, I don't love that.
Yeah, they're gonna love that one. All right, so that'll be Kevin's first introduction to the planning process. Again, tell your wife she can yell at you, not me. You volunteered. Mr. Lemire.
You never know, the snow coming, you're not happy. That's wishful thinking.
All right, um, Mr. Bork, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. There were no items moved from consent, we have one item under other business, sewer warrant article, Mr. Byron?
At Paul's, I was approached by a citizen of the town who wishes to remain nameless, that he would like to, or she would like to donate the ten thousand dollars to the town for that warrant article. I'm advising the, um, the board, obviously we can't, uh, spend that money. Um, it's no means no.
Yep.
But, um, I just wanted to let the board know that I can get back to that individual and talk to them and advise them that that may be something the board could look into next year.
Okay. Well, I think that individual should be thanked and.
Right.
Absolutely.
If it materializes as stated, we can do that. Great. Um, I don't normally do this, but I know there is one person in the public that may wanna address the board. So I will open up a public input for a very short public input, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Brunel. Very short. Um, Jason, Route eleven Perry Court, uh, congratulations to the new board members. Interesting election this year. Heard something about the volunteer fire department, and I guess I, I, I don't know what was going on, but I guess there's a plan being put together that the chief brought. Jason may have, um, about wage scales and things like that. Can that be made public, please? How that's, what, what the plan is?
Uh, yeah, I don't see a reason why.
You guys voted for it and, well, no, I understand, I just, I haven't seen it. No, I haven't seen it. Can you maybe post the website or email it?
I think the way, the way to, just to kinda clarify it too, is that the way this schedule is now, if they hired a firefighter, a call firefighter, they would get started at sixteen dollars and whatever it was. The chief has proposed a plan that says all firefighters will start at ten dollars, plus whatever credit, creditations they may have, that will bring it up to like, I think it was fourteen fifty, if they had everything. So in a way, it's a savings to the town, we are bringing on some new call firefighters, you know, as that works. You know, and I think we'll be part of the minutes, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we will attach this memo as part of the minutes.
Yeah, it's public, so it'll be there.
Understood, I just, I had never seen it before. I've been all over the website and I just had not seen it, so that's why I was hoping. Also, um, uh, you know, it, it's, it's generally known that in, in the, uh, public, um, arena like we are here, um, that, uh, we like to give money for additional calls and certs, and there's some, there's some industries out there that, that do do that. I can tell you they're few and far between. I've been in about seven industries myself, and it doesn't matter how many more calls I get, it doesn't matter how much more schooling I get, I, I don't get paid for it. Uh, if I do, I have to move a job and hopefully that it gets it to me, but my employer doesn't come to me and say, well done, thank you, we're gonna give you now, uh, additional monies. It just, it doesn't happen. I know it might happen in the IT world, I've seen that. Uh, 'cause I know someone in it. Uh, you might get another certification. What I'm saying though is, is you know, I, it's, it's easy to give away other people's money, and, and I, I think, I think it's, I, I understand why you're doing it. But in these days and in, in these, in these times, those things go away. Those are the things that are going away in, in the private sector because they're expensive and you have to find those dollars.
So I would just say, and just say one thing about that then. I, I would equate that to, uh, a rank and position. So as you move from manager to group manager to director, you do get an increased per for, a cre- increase for responsibility. As you move up in the firefighter service, from firefighter one, firefighter two, to EMT, you have, you have an added amount of responsibility. And, and that responsibility should be compensated. That's, that's all that is. It's not about, you just went out and got a, uh, I'm now a, you know, the seat, the car seat attacher, I'm gonna give you fifty bucks more now. That's not what we're doing. It's, it's really about position.
And if, and if.
Everybody's a firefighter two, and everybody's a firefighter, you know what I'm saying, so.
Stipulated, if that's, if, if it's by, it's by a, an actual position, a promotion, that's one thing. If it's just, 'cause it was described as certifications, you.
In the firefighter service, it is certifications, but, you know, if, if you're a firefighter two, you're qualified to do X things, and if you're a driver, you're, you're an engineer, you know, pump engineer, those are different responsibilities. They're not officers, but now that they're fire, they can potentially move into officer slots, right, so.
Understood. Um, the other thing was, I, I noticed there was a quick conversation and, um, I, I, kudos to Mr. Hope for, uh, for, uh, putting off his, uh, his contractual increase. Um, but can we, can, can I, uh, that, that should be a public document, right?
It's, the document is with the town clerk and you are, have, and any citizen has access to it.
Excellent, just gotta make a request, yep. Who, who writes that contract?
It's a contract that was developed between the board and, and the, at this point, the town administrator at that time.
All right.
And then reviewed by our, our attorney.
Okay. And then, um, it, Mr. Byron just spoke of a donation to the town, um, who you remon- who wants to remain anonymous. But I find that very troubling. Uh, troubling in that, um, granted, this year we said no, the town said no to that warrant article. But to think that this board may even consider to spend that, like, as, as an example, let's say, next year you didn't make it a warrant article and this person donates ten grand. That we would somehow now go do it, um, when the last word of this town was not. It may not have been for monetary reasons that the town voted no, and we don't know that. And so, to me, that's almost an end-around, um, for one. For whatever reason that this person wants that study to happen, there could be some, uh, conflict of interest there or, or, um, reasoning why this person wants that to happen in this town, and you've got a town that officially said, no, we don't want that. And it may not be because of money, but because we don't want to have sewer run down into our town, because it opens up a whole different can of worms. You know, one that our lawyer was good to, the, the attorney that sat here, who commanded us on how nice and little our town was. Well, that's one of those things that shapes the face of our town, as if we all suddenly have public, public utilities running down here. So that person may have a very large business interest in why they want the taxpayer to fund a, um, or pick up the tab in the future on a public sewer system. And then, um.
Just stop there for a second. It's my understanding, and I would defer to you, Mr. Byron, 'cause you know this more better than I do, just to make sure that the public understands it. The proposal was not for us to put in a public sewer system. The proposal was for us to study and put, set it, set the plans and guidelines to do it. Any developer would have to actually pay for that. If we don't do it, a developer can still come into the planning process and do it, and we would have no, we wouldn't have any pre-plans, right? We wouldn't be able to, to make sure it's done the way we think it's best for the community and the whole. Do I have that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're not, we're not, we're not saying we're gonna go put a public sewer system in. We're saying is we're gonna make sure we have the right, right alliance, the right alignments, the right planning, the right relationships with other, other communities to be able to do it, so that when a contractor comes in or a developer comes in to do it, it's been done based on the, based on the best interest of, of the community. So, that's what that's all about. Um, I would also stipulate that if you look at most of the surveys that are done around development, one of the things that a large percentage of the community that responds says, we need some style of industry, and we need some kind of a sewer system to be able to bring those industries in. That, that would mesh, mesh well with our community. If we don't do something, it's not gonna stop it. We have no, nothing in the, in our ordinances that would stop development in those areas anyway.
I, I understand that, and I would say let the developer do it myself, but, um, the ultimate survey is at the ballot box. So we can send out as many surveys as we'd like, and people can say whatever they want, but in the end, the ballot box is the official survey that we should be listening to. Um, lastly, Mr. Brunel, it was, like, like Mr. Lemire said, um, I commend you for wanting to give up your, uh, stipend. But in my opinion, as a citizen and voter of this town, that's an end-around. That's an end-around what the voters' wishes were. And finding ways around or nuances and getting people money, um, however it comes through the budget is, in my opinion, uh, counter to the spirit of what the town said. And it is impossible for the voter to say no to every possible instance that this board could come up with to figure out a way around how it speaks. In other words, we were only given one question to answer no to. Should we have been given no in all cases, any instances whatsoever? I mean, how do you, 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 I mean, you have to look at what the voter said and say what it is. And I understand your intent, um, but quite honestly, I, I, I do, I find it dishonest to try to figure a way around what the voter just said Tuesday. You know, they told us Tuesday what they wanted, it's not even a week yet, and I understand what you're doing, but I.
Yeah, well, I, I would just, I would just, we're gonna stop you there, but, um, I'm assuming you're done, but, and if you're not, I'm sorry, you can continue, but, um, the word dishonest rubs me the wrong way. I am not being dishonest, it was not my intent to run around. I look at a one-time thank you bonus as a completely different thing. The fact is, it's coming out of my pocket. I'm already gonna get it whether I, I'm gonna get it anyway, it's in the budget, it was gonna come out of my pocket, and I'm just gonna direct it to somebody else who has felt a little bit of a, a problem, right? So, that was my intent. There was no dishonesty there. I don't look at it as a COLA. You could also apply your same rule that we shouldn't be going steps and everybody should be frozen based on the fact that no means no with the COLA. But a COLA means something different to me than our, our salary plan, and this meant something differently than the COLA. I, I certainly take your feedback and the board doesn't support it, which is fine. Again, the word dishonest, that's just twisting it, because I'm not being dishonest. I, I, I took an oath, I have served this community for three years, and I'll continue to serve for the next three years, and it'll be my, I will do it in the best way I can. And I'm always open and I'm not trying to be dishonest, so, you know, the word is wrong.
Well.
It's not me being dishonest.
I, I understand that you don't feel that way, but as the guy whose tax money was taken to pay your stipend, I see it as, I see it as dishonest. So I understand you don't feel it is, but it's how I see it, and so, and so my point is, is at that point, any budget item that we, or, let's say.
No, he was taking his money.
His money, I'm already giving it.
He was gonna get that anyway.
Excuse me, Mr. Lemire, I, I, I didn't interrupt you earlier, please let me finish my thought.
I, I gave Jason the opportunity and I, you know.
I know, Mr. Lemire, you'd like me to just go home, but, you know.
No, no, it's not.
So, my point, my, okay.
Jason, it's not.
All right. So my point is, is there's no difference then than taking money from any other portion of the budget that the voter thought the money was going to. The voters voted for the default budget, thinking that, and we all understand what bottom line is, we understand that. But voters have an idea of where the money is, and we clearly said, we don't believe they should be getting raises at this time, because most of us aren't, and are having the same problems at home. So that's, that's all I'm trying to say is, and I, I find it intellectually dishonest. Thank you.
Again, the dishonest word drives me crazy, but you can say that if you like. All right, seeing no more public, I'm gonna close public input. And seeing that we concluded our business, I will take a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made, and, motion made and seconded. No discussion, I assume. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries, five zero zero. Our next meeting will be March twenty-fifth. It is a interview process with, uh, brief meet, brief, a brief business meeting, but then an interview process with legal services. So, we'll see you then, have a great week.
No, you need.